All right, I'd like to call to order the Radcliffe City Council Work Session from Monday, December 9th, 2024 at 5:00 PM at Radcliffe City Hall. It's being streamed live on Facebook. If you can rise for an invocation and you can remain standing for a pledge.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for your many blessings. Father, we enter into this season of Christmas. We thank you for your son. We thank you for our mayor. We thank you for our city council and all those who have chosen to serve. Father, we're thankful for our service members who are both here and abroad. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
.......................................................................................... All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to our December meeting. Hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving and enjoyed their holidays and Tim, I know you did Kim, we all got the photos.
(laughing)
So, but thank you all so much for being here. Well, before we start into discussion items, I just wanted to add something to the meeting if that's all right. This is just an update. Couple of council members, I know Mr. Brown, some of the other council members had asked if we could get an update from Green River. And one of the great things about having a local company is you can call them at 10 o'clock in the morning, the day of the meeting, and they show up. So Dave, you want to come up here real quick and update? Dave, of course, is with Green River. And they have been working very diligently along with Ashley to get all the necessary information. Dave, you want to flip that switch towards you. It's off, yeah, bottom one there you go. They've been working very diligently. So they have staged an area here in town where they've been unloading a lot of dumpsters. Carts are starting to, they'll be coming in here next week. And so I've been personally out there, so I've seen all the dumpsters and everything, so I know things are moving in the right direction. So Dave, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you all very much. Am I coming through on the mic? Okay?
Yep.
I would say we're right on schedule, if not a little ahead of schedule. As Mayor Duval said, the front load boxes have started arriving. They were arriving all week last week. They'll continue arriving through this week. And then starting early next week, the residential cans are going to arrive. The residential cans are being dispersed by the company that we bought the cans from, and they're going to start doing that on the 17th. So that's a week from tomorrow, Tuesday, December 17th. We have been to every business in Radcliffe and talked to them about their front load can. And probably 90% to 95% of them have responded very positively with this is what size our can is and this is how often it gets picked up. The 5% to 10% that don't know their frequency are going to be put on a once a week schedule. And then, you know, if they find out that they need more than that, they'll be able to reach out to us and we can increase their hauls. We haven't had any major hiccups. We have some beautiful trucks that we have. Most of them have arrived. We're expecting one more to arrive tomorrow. That'll be the last truck that's coming to Radcliffe. Putting letters on them, getting them, you know, spit and shine, looking really nice. So that's where we are with our schedule. We're really happy with how everything goes, with how everything's going. And we'll continue working with Ashley and getting information.
Dave, I know one of the things, I know the carts, of course, on the residential sides, all of us have been getting a lot of questions, of course, regarding that. Do you have the routes yet chosen or are you going to have you all plan that side of it out? So I know that's been one of the questions we're getting.
Yeah, good question. Routing is going to be finalized this week. We're going to provide you all with the service days. We're going to provide the city with the service days that everyone can expect by December the 20th. So we want to get a good look at the route and even drive. We'll get in our pickup trucks and drive the days, make sure that they make sense for us. One thing people don't like is they don't like to be told they're getting picked up on a Tuesday and then we have to say, oh, sorry, we're going to actually pick you up on Thursday. So we want to work the routes for a week and get that information to you all when it's ready to roll out.
Okay. And then I know just obviously with the help of our local paper and as well as Facebook and information that we can get out, Waste Management is going to pick up the final week of December. There's two days that roll over, which I think Ashley says 29th and 30th, or whatever the last two days, which is a Tuesday of December. But if your normal pickup schedule is through that last week, so if your pickup is on a Thursday or your pickup is on a Friday, that is the last day of pickup for your can through Waste Management. Now, it's our understanding that Waste Management is going to follow and come back and pick that can up once it is dumped by their, whoever's going to be picking their cart, their 96 gallon totes up, or carts, whatever you want to call them. So the last days are the 30th and 31st. So if your pickup days for Waste Management fall on the 30th or the 31st, Waste Management is still scheduled to pick those up on that date. They do ask that you leave your cart out. Don't immediately pull it back to the house once it's been dumped those last week because their trucks are going to come by and pick those cans up. The only confusion we may have is, is Green River is green as well, but you have Green River on the side of it. I can't, the carts, the totes.
Yeah, they are, they say Green River Waste on them and they're several shades darker than the Waste Management, so.
Yep. So those will be hopefully at your house, you know, as long as everything goes the way we plan it, those will be at your house at the time in which those carts are going to be picked up. Then you can start filling up your Green River carts to have them out the following week, which will fall into that January 1st on date. So is that about right?
That's exactly right. When we deliver the Green River Waste cans, every handle will have this information on it. It has our office contact information and some simple instructions for people to follow so that there's not an interruption in service. We found that this is a really handy way to communicate with everybody as it goes out.
And keep in mind, to those watching and those that can put this out on Facebook, office officers will share it, as well as the paper. We have contracted and hired a, through the bid process, a waste hauler, a waste hauler to provide this service. So it is, they have, they are providing a local office here in our community, which Dave and I were talking about in my office a few minutes ago, and we'll have that information out. But they are the contracted person, just like when something goes wrong with Brandonburg Telephone Company or your internet goes down like Spectrum did this past weekend, you know, you should not be calling City Hall every time something goes wrong. That is why the provider is here and that's why the provider is being provided this issue. I know a lot of people on Facebook like to talk and like to say things and everybody loves social media. But at the end of the day, the information, the correct information should only be coming out of this office, out of their office, and/or the people that are associated with what's going on. So I know there's been a lot of misinformation, a lot of things being shared by people that would like to know everything going on, but at the correct time, we're sending out the information that is needed, the information that people need to know. If things are wrong and we can assist, obviously we will, but Green River is our contractor, so. Any questions?
I do.
Yep.
What would be your suggestion? I mean, you're still trying to map out this route. So you're not, it sounds like you're not going to be doing a mass mailing to tell people your garbage is going to be picked up on this day, or am I incorrect on saying that?
We're not doing a mass mailing. We do have, they're filling out a Google form and they're also calling into the office and we're going to put this handout out with all the cans. So they still have to call into the office and set up their billing information. And when they call in, we'll give them the date that they're picked up or we'll communicate that to them when we get billing information from them too. We are going to probably mail out a lot of bills initially until people get set up on auto payment, electronic billing, all the other billing options they have. So that'll be where a lot of the communication comes in.
Yeah, and I think the public, to your question, I think the public has to understand. Spectrum, Brandonburg, I'm using those because they're provided services, my cellphone, I have to physically do something to get that service. It's not like I just sit at home and magically happens. And so they, there has to be some initiative that is taken by the citizen to ensure that they're getting garbage service based on the new provider. We haven't had this in 20 years, so it's kind of a new thing.
It is a new thing.
But the public has to understand and that you have to at least reach out and make an effort to set your own service up, just like you do when you move into a new tenant or you go have Harden County Water turned on, you have your electric turned on. They're not just assuming, there's electric at the house, right? There's electric that comes to the house, but you still have to call to set the service up.
Okay.
No, I'm not criticizing you. I'm just saying that's just in general.
No, that's a very good point. Everybody needs to know that.
People have to reach out, yeah.
Second thing is, do you bill on a monthly basis or quarterly?
We bill quarterly. We also bill monthly.
I think commercial will be monthly.
I think commercial will be monthly, yeah. We do have several billing options.
Okay. And one more question. Okay, so if I've got to set it up and if I, so you're going to go around and look for cans that are already out, yes, but when you drop off cans, like you're going to look for Waste Management cans and drop off with?
Well, every house or every resident should have a can.
Okay. So like I have two cans is my question. So if you see two cans sitting there, I'm guessing, will you drop two cans at that location?
No, the folks that have extra services, like an extra can or recycling, that'll be information that we need to get from them when they set their building up.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, because like with Waste Management, even when I got my new address, when I moved to that new house, I had to call and add the extra can because Dad only had one. Yep.
Toshi Yot.
And actually, you all have touched on everything because I had messaged you a couple weeks ago. In my neighborhood, there were some questions and it seems like you all addressed them, but I'm going to, just for the sake of Cali Crossing Cafe neighborhood watching, I hope, hopefully you're getting your answers. There will be, you have to call in to get set up. And so where was that number? Has it's already been published so that they can start getting their service?
I think that number is either on the Facebook page.
Green River Facebook page?
Well, Green, so Green River's webpage has some information to fill out. If you live in Radcliffe, we have a welcome Radcliffe page that we set up. On Radcliffe City's page, there's information about Green River Waste coming to town.
We're going to do a build, our sign boards, we're going to put out just to remind people.
Okay, so on the city page, we will have your phone number. You have a Green River website with the phone number and you've got a Radcliffe Waste Management page as well?
We have a Radcliffe, well, on the Radcliffe Shout page, we've, we've.
Sharing information on there, yeah.
We also took out an ad in the Radcliffe area on Facebook that says, you know, set up a radius around the city of Radcliffe where they'll be able to reach out to us as well.
Okay.
And then the office should allow them to, which that's what him and I were talking about in the back a few minutes ago, getting that set up within the next week or so to get them being able to come in and.
So right now, everyone can expect there's trash day to be the same day as of right now?
I don't want to set any expectations for trash day pickup just yet.
Okay.
And I would just ask people to call into the office starting early next week.
Start calling early next week, okay.
We'll have, we'll have a lot more information a week from, a week from tomorrow.
Can you just say your phone number?
Yeah, our phone number is 270-999-5458.
And your website is?
And their website is greenriverwaste.com.
Greenriverwaste.com, thank you. And you mentioned the recycle and you'll talk to everybody about that as well. So there is a recycle service.
That's right.
And you will address that with those that want to recycle and when you pick that up and how all that works.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ms. Owens, Kim, you got anything?
I need some more questions.
Okay. And that's what I just want to touch on again is remember this is a service that's being provided and you have to call, just like you do any other service that you have to set up your service. Like this is not an automatic, hey, I hope it just shows up at my door and I'm going to be mad at somebody because it's not here.
That will have to.
Also mandated.
Yeah, it's a garbage mandated pickup, so.
Do you know your office hours yet and days of the week?
Thank you, yeah. Office hours are 8 to 5, Monday through Friday.
I don't want to sound harsh, but I'm just, you know.
I do have one more.
Yep.
I have a variety of people that I pay for the garbage for. So when I call the office, can I set up that account for all of those houses?
Yeah, different addresses.
Yes, you can.
I talked to Casey today about that, about how many different, because I got like 59 residents I have to.
You should get a, I should just go.
Well, no, because I'm not going to say that. I pay more, Kim.
I was saying.
But no, I do thank you, but I just, I think that's the thing we're trying to hammer home is just like every service, you've got to, you know, these things just aren't going to happen. You've got to take the initiative to set up. Landlords have to take the initiative to set up. Commercial properties have to take the initiative to set up. One landlord or one commercial business reached out to me this afternoon that I shared with Dave in the back. He was concerned that his bill went up, but in fact, based on the new pricing, he was actually saving about $20, well, $40 a month based on the two current eight yard dumpsters that he has. And so, you know, keeping in mind that while the Waste Management, some people loved them, some people hated them. The new bids came out, that cost was up. We went with Green River. They're offering the local office, which I think is going to help out tremendously. And so you just have to set the new service up. It'll be a headache. There'll be some, there always is issues, doesn't matter. Every time you do something new. Spectrum went out this weekend. Keep that in mind. We got a bunch of calls, you know, people asking me, am I, the rentals, hey, is Spectrum out? Yes, they went out. Things happen. But ultimate goal is to make sure that service is provided. We don't want trash to be left out. And I did hear one comment that I do agree with is that it is winter, so if something does get picked, missed, at least it's not hot and it's not steamy and the garbage is going to stink. So that's a good thing till we get everything right. And I was like, ah, you know, I get along with that comment. So um, this, I usually don't answer questions on Facebook, but.
That's a good idea.
I'm going to answer this one because I'm not sure. The question is Waste Management allowed three bags or three bundles of tree branches each week. I'm not familiar with that because they didn't pick anything up outside the cart. So I placed a call and email that I almost picked up outside the can. So that's probably bulk pickup, going to pick up, boxes have to be cut down and put in the can or these services would be a fee for service. You all do bulk pickup. This is going to be the same thing that Waste Management did before where if there is a, if you'll pick up everything within the can, if there's something outside the can, obviously, you know, the same thing policy that everyone else is doing, probably won't pick that up. But if your driver can, he might, I don't know. I'll let you answer that. But as far as bulk pickup, can you just talk about the bulk side of it, just so this person's question can get?
Sure. Yeah, I want to defer to the ordinance and what they have to do is they have to call in and let us know that it's out there.
Pull that to you just a little bit there. Sorry.
We need customers to call in and let us know that there's a bulk item that's out there that needs to be picked up. So we can ask questions about it and have them prep it properly, like a mattress needs to be wrapped in plastic and that kind of thing. And I think it's limited to one item per month, but they need to call and communicate with us and, you know.
Let me see that again.
That's the biggest thing. Communicate with us. Let us know it's out there.
Okay. And then this individual that's making this message, I would just suggest they call the, let me say it again so they can hear, 270-999-5458. Again, call this company. This is the provider who has been hired to provide the service here in our community. Ask your questions directly to them versus putting it on Facebook and having, you know, people answer the questions for you. So again, I suggest you make a call to the company and get the direct answer for them and maybe they can even help you out with any concerns in the near future, so.
JJ, you just said something that made me want to point out. This is a franchise, I mean, if they're going to have garbage pickup, which everybody's required to have garbage pickup, it will be through Green River Waste Management.
Correct, yeah.
They cannot contact another garbage carrier to pick up their garbage. Just clarifying that.
Yeah. And there's been some questions and I won't, we're going to end this because I don't want to get on a tirade. Like I said, I don't usually answer those directly, but just because I know the person's asked that question before. There's been people asked, why don't we have a, why don't we open market similar to what Elizabeth Town has? And we looked at that. There's several different haulers that are running up and down the roads constantly. So my garbage may get picked up on Tuesday, someone else's garbage may get picked up on Wednesday, you know, Kim's garbage may be picked up on Thursday. And honestly, those rates are much higher than what the rates are here. And so one reason why we went local with Green River is because their rate was a little bit cheaper, it was cheaper than Waste Management.
Oh, you're pricing.
And it's just the way it is. That is why the council chose to go with that style of bid versus going with open market. We're one of the cheapest in the county as far as pricing. We're at 1401 for once a month pickup residential. I don't believe there's anywhere in the county that is that. And I believe, what's yours, once a week, I'm sorry, I said once a month, once a week. And I believe if we would have went the different way and did open market, those prices probably would have exceeded $26 to $28. Do you live in Eton? Great. No, Ryanville. What's yours? Do you know what's yours?
That was 16.
16 a month. So I'm just saying, you know, we're very reasonable for what we're getting, so. All right. I'm going to get off my soapbox. Thank you, Dave.
Yeah, thank you all very much.
And thank you for, seriously, thank you for attending that short notice. I appreciate it.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
My garbage really is picked up on Thursday.
Huh?
My garbage really is.
It's picked up on Thursday, yeah. All right. All right, Jeff, Chief Cross, you out there? This is just a suggestion that Chief Cross, I didn't, last meeting, I should have done something, I didn't do it. I didn't wish your old boy a happy birthday. It was a birthday last month, so.
I think we did wish.
You got one more gray hair popped up.
That's 29.
Years here, right? Yeah. 30.
30.
How many years you got here? 30?
31 and a half.
31 and a half.
Don't tell the retirement people you're 29.
Chief Cross had met with myself as well as Chance to discuss, just, it's a small issue, but it's an issue we think we can just assist in. It won't cost the city nothing, but it's, it's a policy issue. Obviously, part of the council's duties is policies and procedures of the handbook. And one of those issues is our retirees. We have a couple retirees that, you know, obviously retired and came back and worked for us. They don't, their benefits obviously are paid, we don't have to pay their benefits. But the chief has a suggestion. It would also help the employee, but it doesn't cost us anything. In the meanwhile, it's just a change in the policy that allows us to do it, so.
Part of this rehire on the contract, when somebody retires and they come back as an officer under our contract, therefore, we don't pay benefits on them. And one of those benefits that they don't get is health insurance. And when we originally wrote this, we included I and dental in that, but come to find out, you don't really get I and dental through the state retirement. They have to sub it out for you to get it from an independent contract, so to speak, because it's not actually part of your health plan when you retire. So when, like, when somebody retires, they get their retirement, they get their health insurance through the state. They don't get dental and I through the state. They have to get that on the side, so to speak. And it's quite expensive. I think it's, right now, I'm here, it's over a couple hundred dollars a month. So if we can just put them on our dental and I plan, I think for the, like, for the whole entire family plan for both of them, it'd only cost them like 97 bucks a month out of their pocket. And they're all, you know, they're willing to pay it out of their pocket and it doesn't cost the city anything for them to be, get it through us, but, you know, it just has to come out of their check for it. So that's what I was asking for, I think it's 3.6, 0.2 in the policy manual, to reword that to say, to exclude the dental and I part of that where it says they can't get dental and I and remove that and strike through that so they can get dental and I at their call, at their, you know, own cost.
They would be paying for it out of pocket. It wouldn't be nothing that's coming out of the city's budget. There would just be a deduction off their paycheck.
That's correct.
Anybody got any questions?
You're saying full cost, but it's actually our, the cost that they would come through the city. Is that the same thing? Are you saying the same thing?
Well, for instance, like for us, health insurance, you know, the city pays a certain portion of the premium and the employee pays a certain portion. Well, for these retirees, just for the dental and I plan, the city wouldn't pay any of that premium. The employee would pay 100% of it. But it's not real expensive, so it's not going to be a huge hit.
It's cheaper than what they get through the state, so it saves about a hundred bucks.
Still cheaper, yeah, still cheaper, way cheaper than get it through a contract through the state.
Yeah, it saves them about a hundred dollars a month. Where if they had it through the state, it may, I think it was like 200, just shy of 200.
And that would probably be because they're on a group plan with us versus being out there on their own.
That's right.
Yep. But no additional cost to our budget, other than the policy proceeded to allow it to happen. Yep. Any questions? All right, Jeff. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
That's a good idea, Jay.
Thank you. All right. All right, Mr. Murray. All right, number two on the agenda is a planning discussion. This is Mr. Murray Warner. This is the annexations and then the city zoning ordinance. Murray, I'll let you.
So we have an annexation request from Dustin Newton of Northwood Properties and it's for the property at 5800 South Wilson Road, Elizabeth Town, Kentucky, 42701, PVA map number 183-30-00-004. It's Casey Phillips and Jackson Subdivision, Lot 3. I've attached some maps with your packet so you can kind of see where that property is at. The property is 2.083 acres in size and it adjoins the city of Radcliffe, existing city limit to the south, east and west, as shown on the annex plot.
Hey Murray, do you want to just tell them the big yellow box on there?
Yeah, the big yellow piece of property on your map is John Harden High School.
Wilson Road is, so you see the little green side that says site. The road following there is South Wilson. And then John Harden, this coming up the backside of John Harden, big yellow box.
Kind of in the vicinity of Atcher Body Shop over there.
Yep.
If you kind of know where that is. So they have an annexation request and also, they also have a zone map amendment request because the property is in the county. So it has a county zoning classification. As part of requirements in order to be annexed in the city, we have to assign a zone to it. It's Harden County R1 right now. They've actually asked for it to be commercial zone. It does have a house on the property right now. Surrounding properties consist of single-family residential, mini warehouses, a cemetery and a high school. So the whole premise of why they're asking for it to be annexed is the existing property to the south that's in Radcliffe that adjoins this property, there's many storage warehouses and then there's a cemetery behind it. So purpose of it is to bring it into the city, rezone it commercial to match those properties to the south and then they could subdivide it, portion of that. See, one of the things in behind that house that's on that property they're trying to annex is a detention basin for the storage units that are already in the city. So they want to be able to join that basin with the storage units instead of having it off their property and even in a separate jurisdiction in the county as it stands right now. So they could bring it in, subdivide, get that basin on the same property as the storage units, the mini warehouses. And then also they could split off a portion for the cemetery to the back where they could actually have room for expansion of that as well. So to make a long story short, that is the purpose of why they're going, are, you know, going through this request.
Any questions?
And the Planning Commission approved it for recommendation to the city council. There were some questions from the public, but there were no objections or oppositions really. There were just concerns about the detention basin, would have fencing around and that sort of thing. So we addressed those questions, but it's a bit of an odd zone map amendment just because of the nature of the property, as Murray said, and then the surrounding property, right? You've got single-family residential, mini warehouses, commercial, a cemetery and John Harden. It's just very odd.
And a mechanic shop.
Yeah, so it's.
And a house.
Yeah. So it's, it's one of those odd situations, but the commission, I think, made the right decision in recommending approval, so.
Any questions?
So if, once it's approved, assuming it's going to be approved, obviously, then the annexation happened, the zone change will happen with annexation at the same time?
Correct. That's right. Yes.
Yeah, because if it's annexed, we have to give it a zone. We can't keep it Harden County R1 because Harden County R1 is not analogous to anything we have, so.
Makes sense. Well, I like the fact that we're keeping like type of things happening in that particular area. We're not changing and creating new, I like that part.
New properties, yeah, new businesses.
All right, Murray. Mr. Murray, B? Did you already go over both? B?
Zone map.
Yeah.
Or zoning ordinance amendment?
Yep.
I forget that.
Okay. That's what I'm talking about, B.
Oh, B.
Yeah, B.
Okay. So the other item that I had on there was a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance. And as you can see, it's a number of different articles listed, 2, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 27 and 31. Basically, this is in response to House Bill 248 and some new sections of Kentucky Revised Statutes, Chapter 222, that define recovery residences as under the purview of the Cabinet for Health and Family Services. And those recovery residences are essentially, well, the KRS requires certain And those recovery residences are essentially, uh, well, the KRS requires certain entities to refer individuals. Only to certified recovery residences. And to permit local governments to assume inspection and enforcement duties. Also, it requires the Cabinet for Health and Family Services to submit an annual report on recovery, certified recovery residences. To establish the Recovery Residence Certification Trust Fund, establish penalties. Direct the Department um, of Medicaid Services to seek approval to provide for Medicaid coverage and reimbursement. For substance abuse disorder recovery services provided by a certified recovery residence. Um, essentially, our zoning ordinance doesn't actually define recovery residence. The definition being proposed to be added to the zoning ordinance matches that found in KRS. We also had some additions as permitted uses to, really, as it stands. Any zone that allows for residential use, uh, to allow for a recovery residence. Also, we've got, uh, we ended up adding it to the commercial zone standards as recommended by the Planning Commission. Because there are some churches within commercial zones that operate. Could potentially operate those types of facilities. Right now, a lot of them will operate what you might call like a group home or something like that, or boarding house. I think there's a few of those out there in the county at least. So. We didn't wanna miss something and that was added into a commercial zone, in case you're wondering. Plus, there are houses that are non-conforming uses in commercial zones. Like if you go up Wilson Road. Uh, South Wilson, a lot of those houses are on commercial, but they're houses, unused as houses, so.
So a little more background. Recovery residences and sober living homes and that sort of thing. For several years have been a problem, as you guys will remember. They've been a problem in Kentucky. They've been a problem in our county. They've been a problem in our city. The idea of them is wonderful. The execution sometimes has been lacking. So back in the spring of twenty twenty-three, the General Assembly enacted and Governor Beshear signed the bill. To strictly regulate these entities. Yeah, now the, it's, it's a brand-new ballgame. The recovery residences are tightly regulated and it's appropriate. Uh, so we have to update our zoning ordinance to keep lockstep with the new definitions of recovery residence. So this is a good thing. This is what we want. Uh, the idea behind these residences is excellent. Uh, we want to have them available in all zones cuz quite frankly, and we've discussed this before. You don't wanna get a foul of the Americans with Disabilities Act. And unfortunately. Uh, that's what can happen if, if we don't take steps like this. So this is something definitely we need to do.
It's a little bit of a wide-open market. Anybody was, that had a house could.
You could rent a house, uh, you could rent a bunk bed in a house for seven or eight hundred dollars a month to a drug addict that was trying to get their life straight. And didn't have a driver's license, trying to get a job. So that, those days are over, I think. Uh, and so this, this is uh, good legislation that the state enacted. And like I said, we need to.
And it gives us a little more teeth to regulate.
Yes, yes. And update our zoning code accordingly. And like Murray said, there was uh, an inclusion of commercial zone. Normally, you wouldn't have these. You wouldn't have a recovery residence in a commercial zone. But if you have a church that wanted to do something like that, have a program. Then, you know, this, this might allow them an opportunity to do that. So typically, you'd find these in residential zones, so.
Any questions, Murray?
If someone comes here to apply for, do they have to apply for a license? Do you apply for, what do you apply for?
Through the state.
To the state. And then.
Not us, the state.
Okay, so they apply it to the state and so there, there's a sober living house in a neighborhood. So someone buys, buys a house, turns it and converts it to a sober living. Do we ever know that that's a sober living? Because they have to, they apply at the state and then what, we, how do we know, as in Radcliffe?
So we've worked closely with the fire department and what happens is, once they're approved through the state, just like any other business. They'll bring that licensing into the city. And then we work with the fire department to make sure that everything, and we work very closely with the state to make sure that everything. We have a checklist and we go down it, make sure everything that is good and order. Um, and just like with the city of E-Town, um, you know, right now, you can find a list of their residences online. If it ever is to come to that point where we have numerous residences, they will be listed online as well. And that's so that the state, as well as us, can keep in conjunction.
And it tightens up the regulations.
Yes, that's good. That's good to know.
So they'll be closely monitored going forward, which is a good thing because they have not been monitored in the past.
Yeah, I believe, and I don't wanna quote the exact numbers, so this is just, I'm ballparking. Um, you know, E-Town may have had a hundred and fifty. I know they're down to probably like eighty. But those eighty are legit ones that are operating within the scope of what they're designed to do. The other ones were just there to profit off of.
A, a lot of the chaff was eliminated with the new regulations, which is a good thing, I think.
So, and the reason I say, you know, I use E-Town as example, they had a lot more than we had. I think at one time, we maybe had six on the books. Um, but if you remember, we did do something where it brought us in more in line with everyone, us, Vine Grove, as E-Town. Where we all kinda had the same rules and regulations, so you didn't have us, someone leaving from there trying to come here or vice versa. And so this just tightens it up a little bit more.
And just for clarification too, we didn't add it to every zone. I don't think the industrial zone is listed there because it doesn't allow housing. Now, oddly enough, you're gonna look at this, you're gonna say, well, why do you have any industrial holding zones? For whatever reason, holding zones, they allowed commercial holding, industrial holding, residential holding. They did allow like a single, one single-family home uh, on a holding zone. So that's why we added it, just because there was an allowance for a home. It seems weird that you would have that, but.
They're oddball zones anyway.
Well, we actually had one, uh, at our Planning Commission meeting last week. We had a fence for a house in a commercial holding zone. And unless you looked it up, you'd have never known that that was a commercial holding zone.
Yep. Any other questions from Mr. Murray? All right, thank you, Murray.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we'll start over here. Mr. Brown, you got anything?
Merry Christmas and stay safe when you're driving.
Quick and simple day.
Okay, it looks like on December the thirteenth, we're gonna have, the city of Radcliffe will have the Old Fashioned Christmas at the cabins here. Uh, at Saunders Springs from six to eight o'clock. Parents can bring their kiddos out and uh, the kiddos can whisper their wish list to Santa Claus. And, and mom and dad can get a picture with them sitting with Santa. So again, that's on December the thirteenth from six to eight P M. Um, and on Sunday, December the fifteenth, is the December full cold moon. That starts at five o'clock at Saunders Springs, hosted by the Forestry and Conservation Board. Again, that's on Sunday, December the fifteenth. You've been going to those, haven't you, Jerry? Have you gone to all of them?
No.
No? So, anyway, that's all I have to report.
Affordable Christmas is this weekend. Um, that is through uh, Helping Hands. And those families that signed up for that, usually through the schools and the family resource centers, um, that will be taking place this weekend.
Where's it at?
Um, it'll be at Abundant Life Church with a mixture of a bunch of other organizations and churches.
At what time?
I think that starts at nine.
Nine, gotcha.
But they'll have all, the parents will have all the information on their times and when to pick up.
It's Saturday, this Saturday?
This Saturday. And that is it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Merle?
Taste of Radcliffe. Radcliffe Women's Club is this evening at Calvin Community Center. It starts at six o'clock. I believe there's over thirty-something different food vendors that will be um, hosting the different foods. It's fifteen dollars each. They also have a lot of nice auction items uh, that have been donated from different businesses and individuals and organizations. Um, supporting the Radcliffe Women's Club. So that is tonight at Calvin, um, if you're able to attend that. And the Radcliffe Small Business Alliance Installation and Awards Banquet. Uh, closing out twenty twenty-four and welcoming in our incoming president, Ms. Michelle, for twenty twenty-five. Will be this, uh, Tuesday, the seventeenth at Calvin at noon. Um, it's open to the public if you'd like to attend that. And. I, I wanted to say that our Light Up Radcliffe, if you missed it, um, you can catch some videos. It was just a very uh, great event. Thank you to Radcliffe Women's Club for the cocoa and the hot chocolate. But I will say, the Grinch tried to steal Christmas and he failed. But it was a very good attempt and it was a very fun evening. And thank you to the Radcliffe Fire Department, Santa, the Parks and Rec, and Calvin Community Center.
Yeah, thank Timmy.
And all the employees, Tim.
And Timmy had us mic'd up.
And everyone that helped make that. I always get excited about it. So if you haven't seen the Festival of Trees and if you haven't been down this way. Come out and check it out.
Santa.
I said Santa was wonderful. Santa and the Radcliffe Fire Department, uh, it was wonderful. So thank you all, everybody that made that possible.
Ms. Owens?
Uh, just a reminder, Fraternal Order of Police Lodge number thirty-nine has their shop with cop this Saturday. At seven A M. at the Radcliffe Walmart Supercenter. They are short of volunteers. So I would hopefully encourage our members here to show up as well as anybody that can hear my voice today. I've already posted it online and I've talked with Mr. Moore shortly before arriving here. Because our policemen are out doing um, funeral detail and, and all the other traffic details and all that they're gonna do. We may be short a few hands. So for anybody that's available, again, that's this Saturday at seven o'clock in the morning. I said, bring your comfortable shoes, your stretchy pants, and your good attitude. And help some, pair off with some families that have been identified by the individual school resource coordinators and youth services. And let's see what we can do for them for that morning. Typically, it only takes about maybe two hours, depending on how the shopping goes. So, but I encourage anybody who wants a volunteer opportunity or just has a little bit of time in the morning. To show up at the Radcliffe um, Supercenter Walmart and we'll get it started. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim? Nothing to do? Okay, all right. Uh, all right, we, I think everybody mentioned everything we got going on. You got something else? Oh, I thought you said something. Um, Winston cabins, Mr. Russo, we got, next month. We have our council meeting, our annual council meeting. That will be back at Calvin, our Christmas meeting. I believe there'll be several people here and as well as out in the audience, Ms., Ms. Bell, Councilwoman-elect. Will be uh, doing our swearing-in ceremony. Um, so we'll be having that next, uh, next week. So we encourage those families, you guys may wanna invite your families and everyone to come out. It's just a nice setting to be back there and have our swearing-in ceremony. So um, that'll be next uh, week, next Tuesday, December seventeenth at five thirty back at Calvin. Ms. Russo, do you got anything to add?
Sir, I, I forgot to add.
Yep.
Um, the president of the Kentucky Chess Association, Mr. Darryl Mott, M O T T. Wanted me to make sure that the city of Radcliffe and surrounding cities understood that this Saturday. We hosted, we being the Pat Museum, hosted the largest non-scholar open chess tournament in the last twenty or thirty years. For the state of Kentucky. So it kept me there. For a long time. It was a good thing. It was a good thing. But to have something happen like that in which people came down to eat and shop. Some came in the day before and got a few hotel rooms. So it went really, really well. So he wanted to make sure that I put that out to the community cuz he doesn't live here. He's.
Gotcha.
Yep, the other side. But he wanted to make sure that we all understood here, when we talk about economic development, opportunity. And this not being, just to pass through, the individuals that participated came from Bowling Green. Um, Indy, of course, Ohio, here, Louisville, Lexington, Frankfurt, and a couple of other areas. So we had eighty-five players plus a few coaches, family members, and friends that were there. And so this is the fourth time I've hosted them, but this has been the largest one. So I just wanted to put that out for him. Thank you.
Congratulations. Uh, congratulations. That um, um, Mayor's Breakfast, January twenty-fifth, I forgot to need to mention that, get that out there. That's next, that's the last Saturday of the month. Uh, we'll be sharing more information as that approaches. And then uh, I will unfortunately not be able to go back there to the Radcliffe Women's Club. I did drop off a door prize from Red Brick Cottage. I hope one of you guys win that cuz it's a very nice prize. And uh, I gotta go to my little son's basketball game, so. He's only in sixth and seventh grade hopefully once, so.
You will be doing our swearing-in on Tuesday. I'll forget.
Yeah, we'll be there to swear in, so. All right, with that, we are adjourned and we'll see you all next week. Thank you all.